Byard.
February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for the Town of Southwick. It's on Wednesday, February fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Those in attendance, myself, Russell S. Fox as Chairman, Vice Chairman Doug Mogul, Jason Perron. We have Chief Administrative Officer Carl J. Steinhardt on Zoom. We have Assistant C A O Nadine Signoni. I finally got it right. Here present, we have Administrative Assistant Robin Solak. And I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. So everybody will stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before I begin, I have been working on something concerning public comments. I've been consulting with town council. I've been looking at what other communities have done. I've talked with the C A O. And I've noticed that a lot of communities, I shouldn't say a lot, some communities write down the purpose of public comments right on the agenda. This is something I'm going to suggest to this board that we adopt. Purpose of public comments, there's no law, it's a courtesy. It's an opportunity for anyone that's not on the agenda that'd like to make a statement to the Select Board, that's this is their opportunity. But the statement should be concerning policy. The statements aren't a back and forth. They're not a question and answer. They're concerning policy. They're also should be civil in nature. And more importantly, what a lot of communities put in, and I think we should put in, know that they should refrain from any personal attacks. This is a meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Southwick, and I think there should be, it should be respectful. And I'm not trying to deny anybody their freedom of speech, but this isn't the forum for for being rude or or any sorts of innuendos or attacks, personal attacks. So I'm going to suggest to this board that words that have that effect be placed on the agenda for all future meetings unless I hear some sort of disagreement.
I see. Okay, with that, then I'm going to open.
I just want to add, I mean, ninety-nine percent of the time, you know, public comment is used to make an ask of the Select Board or or find out about an issue or bring something up that's not on the agenda and that's much appreciated and anybody should be, you know, welcome to do so. It's it's when it it goes to a lower level that we seem to have problems. So I just want to, you know, be clear about that. We've been very, and U S Chair has been very flexible with with public comments, and sometimes we have some back and forth when there's a legitimate question that we can answer and, you know, it's something that's information we can provide and we'll continue to do that. But I appreciate the thought on this whole thing.
Okay, good points. All right, with that, I'm going to take public comments at this time. I'm going to ask anybody in this room first. If that would like to make a public comment, to raise their hand, then I'll recognize them. I don't see any hands up. I'm going to go to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a public comment?
I don't see any, Mr. Chair.
All right, then we are going to our first order of business, and that is to meet with Rick Johnson concerning WIC three, three, eight motocross schedule for twenty twenty-three. Rick, come on up.
All right.
Have a seat. If you want to introduce yourself and your address, it'd be greatly appreciated.
My name is Rick Johnson, one forty-two Taylor Street, Pembroke, Mass. I'm the General Manager of the WIC three, three, eight, which is actually run by my son Keith Johnson.
And Rick, we've been through this many years because you've been doing an excellent job over there. So I'm going to just let you kind of point out any changes that you think that we should be aware of.
No, Mr. Chairman, actually, we're looking at twenty twenty-three as being pretty near a mirror image of what we did in this past year. I'd like to talk about this past year a little bit. I know you're tight on time, but I'll go through it quickly. It really, quite frankly, it was the best run, best season we've had thus far out of the eight years, seven or eight years we've been there. And it's been eight years in the making to bring it to that point. It's getting really fine tuned now with the help of the Chief and Police Chief. We keep working on new ways of making it better. We all met this afternoon in anticipation of of making the national even better and some of the other events and how they work with our neighbors and so forth. We had the fewest weather cancellations. We had the highest ride turnout. We had minimal incidents. We have the great, great national, the attendance was slightly over last year, not a lot. You gotta remember last year, coming out of COVID, the first time we were there. I mean, we blew the numbers away. So to do anything better than that in twenty twenty-two was quite gratifying. So I'm really happy about that. Had the third highest TV viewership in the history of motocross, which was pretty nice, and that was not global for the first time. It was brought into NAV TV through Lucas, which was relatively limited. And I'm looking at the exposure that we had for that event versus some of the very high profile races, we rank up there pretty high. Southwick, by the way, is the only pro-national in the United States or North America that's actually named for its town. Every other one has a different name. But Southwick, as as small a town as it may be compared to some of the others, it's well-known globally because of this. Turnout was strong. It's it's a good indicator for the future. The twenty twenty-three plan, pretty much the same. We're hosting all the same organizations coming in. The Southwick National is set for July eighth. We have a newly established alliance between Feld, the Supercross people, that's the indoor racing, and MX Sports, which is the outdoor racing. We've been at odds ever since they came together. They tried to expand their their schedule that would encroach on our schedule that would be the end of the Southwick National. They learned that they only have a three and a half month program. We have a three and a half month program. Neither of us have a grand championship. We don't have the Super Bowl. We don't have the Stanley Cup. It's cumulative points. And as a result, you can't gain the television companies that you want, like NBC, CBS, Fox. You get the smaller ones, and you also don't get the high-profile sponsors. So we've joined forces. It was, you know, we're all, it's like the Russians and us on the other side of the table coming together, but we brought it together. I attended the event down in Houston last week, and I met the Feld people for the first time, and I can't tell you how supportive they are. And it's evidenced by the fact that they are advertising our outdoor nationals at their indoor events right now, even though they don't begin until May. And if you look at our numbers for pre-sale, all the national seventy percent ahead of last year. Last year was twenty-three percent ahead of the year before. Gives you an idea of how this can snowball better. We also got the attention of of NBC. Every event now is on Peacock. We will be one of only two events in all thirty-one series that'll be national NBC Live globally. They chose us because we're a pretty good place to run a television show. They like it here. They really do like it here. So that's the good side.
Now the shoe's gonna drop.
Well, the bad side is when all the customers find out that they can watch us on NBC, they're going to say, man, if it's a hundred and four degrees, I don't think I'm going to pay for a ticket. So, you know, it's it's a give and take. It is. It's a give and take, but we look forward. We think that the pre-sale will be good enough that no matter what, we'll be in good shape. We're also, oh, I should mention that Supercross will still have the championship. It's seventeen events. We will have our championship. It's eleven events. The top riders, the top twenty-two riders out of those two disciplines, and they're quite different. Indoor racing is not like outdoor racing. The top twenty-two out of that group will then qualify for a three-race series that will end at the L A Coliseum. But ten million dollars, three races for ten million dollars. Now, guess who's paying for part of that? So, look, we're investing in it. We believe that the momentum is there. We believe we're making all the right moves. We think that this new partnership with Feld, and it's called Super Motocross World Championship. So this is the first time that all both of the disciplines will come together for one champion. So we feel it's going to get a lot of traction. So looking, looking forward to that. Basically, that's, you know, we're going to do, we're not going to do a lot of new expansion at the track, having been there eight years now. It's time to refurbish what we did when we first got there. We have miles of fence to redo. We have bleachers to work on. It's now time to get everything snuffed up to the way we did when we first got here the first couple of years. So we're looking forward to it. We don't have a title sponsor as of yet. Because of it being announced, NBC, I hope to get one. I think Twisted Tea is interested right now. If not, Kubota has been our backer for years. They do a wonderful job. MB Track nearby is one of, I don't know, maybe ten or twelve locations throughout New England. They have one right in West Springfield. They've been great supporters of us. So by default, they will become our title sponsor if there isn't another one that wants to step up. We're dealing with some pretty serious issues with ambulance service. Everybody is. There's been a real shakeup in the area. And the Chief and I are working on some options to see if we can help each other and pull together the necessary resources to make sure that we continue to run good, safe events. And that's basically it. We're working hard to make it good.
What's the date?
July eighth. July eighth is the national. It's one day different than last year.
Seventy-six and sunny. I just checked. So.
Thank you.
Your tickets.
Mr. Mogul, I thank you very much. I appreciate that kind of support. So basically, it's the same, you know, we've added in a few open practices more than we anticipate doing. So I don't have to come back here and bother you for a date. If we use them, fine. If we don't use them, I haven't bothered you.
Let me ask a quick question. Sir, Wednesday nights, July and August.
Yes. Then that Wednesday nights, we do schools. We do the learning classes.
Okay.
It's it's pretty much been the tradition. It was originally part of Team Justice.
Right.
And when Team Justice became less of an entity, we got took the opportunity to bring in our young riders to teach them.
Yeah.
Between two of our staff, one being my son, eight-time national champion.
Yeah.
And Chris Canning, the reigning guru of Go Fast.
Yeah.
Were able to take the young kids all the way down to four or five years old, all the way up to the top pros and give them specific instruction to make them safer and better riders.
Good. I was just asking, because Rotary has their concerts, and I know they finish up, you know, right as.
We're normally done by seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Every time.
Okay.
Every time. And I might add that we still take care of all of the the Southwick residents when they come and give us their their I D.
Yeah.
They get about a seventy-five percent discount on everything we do.
Excellent.
Yeah, well, they're our neighbors.
Yeah, I just was checking, make sure you weren't expanding Wednesday night.
No, that's, no, that's the only, that's.
Yeah.
Listen, even if I could get them to do another night.
Good.
No, it's, that's it.
It it's a little humming in the background when the bands are playing.
I got you.
But then it, then you don't, then you don't even hear.
Well, you know, it's good to know. And what I will do is ask them, they don't use the entire track. And let me bring that to their attention, and if they can do the northern side of the track.
Yeah.
It may help.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Yeah, there's always a way.
Yeah. Some of the older folks have hearing problems, you know.
What? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. What'd you say?
Doesn't bother me at all. Well, Rick, thank you very much. I need a motion to accept this schedule.
So move. I hold second.
Okay, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
All right, as usual, Rick, we thank you and because there is an economic spin-off for the town of Southwick, you know, it it affects a lot of local businesses and nonprofits and.
We're very proud of that. We take it very seriously. It's, we feel it's 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 our duty to make sure that we give the best program. Product is king. And we try to give the best product that brings the people here. And I know it helps all of our neighbors, helps us, and stick it together. Thank you so much for your support.
All right, Rick.
I appreciate it.
You going back tonight?
No.
Go get some rest.
We're going to. Thank you very much.
All right, next thing is we're we're postponing the interview for candidates for the Southwick Housing Authority until our next meeting. We'll go to payables, payroll in minutes, acknowledge payables warrant number two, three, two, zero, B, dated two, seven, twenty-three, and the amount of two hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. Acknowledged payroll warrant number two, three, one, nine, dated two, fourteen, twenty-three, in the amount of two hundred fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and thirty-four cents. I need a motion to accept the open session minutes dated two, six, twenty-three.
So move.
You second?
Seconded.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye. Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, we're going over. First thing is notification for Mass DOT and Randy on Zoom.
So I'm good.
Randy. Can you hear me? He's on mute. Anyways, it's a notification from Mass DOT that they are going to begin studying a culvert replacement on Route two oh two over Pearl Brook.
I believe Russ isn't that down where Crestwood used to be and Putnam Farms in that area?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I know they redid the one.
Johnson Brook before.
Right, Johnson Brook, and they did an excellent job on that. So to, hopefully, they're going to do this study and we're going to get the funding for it. Because that would be great to to get that completed also.
Yeah, and this won't go through us. This will be totally done by Mass Highway on their highway.
Correct, correct. So this this is a big deal if if it goes through and gets funded. Also, and I was going to ask Randy what if he was on, Randy did send Mass DOT a letter. I know. Randy, you want to comment about this notification about Mass DOT and the importance of it?
Yeah, sorry, I had to step out for a minute here. So, yeah, we sent a letter to DOT, just requesting them to look at some maintenance issues on Congamon Road. I'm sorry, College Highway, things that I think have been lapsing over the years, things we want to make sure we bring to attention of those that are responsible for maintaining that road. So you saw the letter. I think these are things we've all talked about over over the years, just kind of a reminder to them to take care of these issues.
Okay, and did you want to comment on the culvert, possible culvert replacement on College Highway over Pearl Brook, the importance of that?
Yeah, you know, so I I don't know have any many much details. I actually, I just walked back in the room here. So I don't have any details on that other than that's on their radar, but I don't, I don't, what else to comment then?
No, they sent it. They sent a letter to me notifying that they're beginning that process of reviewing it. They're not guaranteeing anything, of course, but that would be a big plus if they do a good job like they did over Johnson Brook.
Well, Russ, that would be, that's also notifying you, I believe it's through the N P A organization, and they have it on the tip plan. So that's something they're going to do. So as they start to do design, you know, they'll have to come through and meet with our Conservation Commission. They'll confer with Randy's agency.
Right.
And other agencies. So we'll know when they start doing a serious design level because they're going to be contacting certain town departments and boards.
Right.
Yeah, there's a process. I think there's a public review process as well. So we'll be involved in that and commenting on that plan and as that develops.
This is like the decade away notification type of thing.
Hopefully, it's not a decade.
Well, you know, and I, well, I, where did I learn that? And I'll send a letter to Oh, it's the governor. They spelled your name wrong at the top of the letter. I'll have that fixed.
Will you speak to the governor about that? They dropped it now. I had to straighten out the last governor, and I hope I don't have to straighten this one out, so. All right, Randy, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing is a professional conduct policy, the first reading. This is for town employees. Has everybody had a chance to read it over?
This is the, this is the standard language that Maya had developed, and it was a handout at different professional meetings. And if it's something that the board is interested in this language or something along the lines, then at some point, Kim can incorporate it into the employee handbook revision, sir.
Okay, so that's our first reading. If anybody wants to talk about any changes or modifications, we can do that next week. All right. Review changes of the Select Board goals and objectives. I mean, we did some of that last week. Anybody, Jason, you were talking about, you might have something.
I got a bunch.
Okay.
I don't know what you want me to go on, what I'm working on now, or I can get presented for the next meeting.
You got it. Next meeting. Doug, are you okay with the next meeting? Okay. All right, special town meeting and ATM article notice due by March thirty-first. Next is to award tie-in bond preliminary design contract for powder mill sidewalk extension. And and I let Randy go, so. It's like magic. He's back. Randy's back. Okay, I I apologize, Randy. We could have taken care of all of these at the same time.
Oh, no worries. It's all good.
Okay, this looks like this is going to be a one hundred fifteen thousand dollar grant through One Stop for Growth Fiscal Twenty-three Rural and Small Town Program to extend sidewalks and powder mill roads, something we've been working on for several years. So this is good news, Randy.
Yeah, what you have reported was a contract from Ty and Bond to do the preliminary design efforts. They will be doing, we will be asking for an amendment or on a contract, an extension for phase two, which will be the final design. But actually, Dick and I had a site walk with Ty and Bond earlier today. We just, we walked powder mill road. We went over a couple of issues that need to be addressed during design. So once I think all those are resolved during this preliminary design, they'll come back with the final, final bidding plans and documents for that project.
Okay, and it looks like their fee for the design is twenty-eight thousand. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is the, this is basically going to cover some survey work and some geotech work and some preliminary layouts. But yes, that that is the phase, the fee for this phase. And as I said, there'll be a separate contract for the final, final designer work.
Okay, questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the scope of work. Preliminary design service document for Ty and Bond, and also to send a sternly worded letter to Ty and Bond to also correct the spelling of Russell in the signature area of that.
Wow, that's the second time, yeah.
Got it the same exact misphalanx. Thank you, Mr. Mogul.
Doing my best.
All right, guys, so we have a motion. I need a second.
I'll second Mr. Mogul's motion.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Do you have the original for us to sign?
Make sure I do the two Ls real big, you know.
Well, if they don't match, does it void it?
No.
Avoid me first before they avoid that contract.
Thank you. Whoops, sorry, Don.
Thank you. Okay, the next is we have some more donations to the Southwood Public Library gift account. A three hundred dollar donation in memory of Irene Wolf on behalf of the Rhode Island Hospital, Adult Outpatient Rehabilitation Department, Viola Lynn Benavides.
Benavides.
Benavides. A hundred dollar donation in memory of Irene Wolf from Robert and Rachel Davidson. A ten dollar donation in memory of Irene Wolf from Diane Jeanette. A twenty-five dollar donation in memory of Irene Wolf from Andrea Sculler. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Definitely.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul.
Jason Perron, aye.
Yeah. All right, and this is the letter that Randy drafted that he was talking about before. And if you go down through, he's talking about the pavement markings being warned out. He's talking about increased roadside mowing. I asked him again to, once again, ask them about reevaluating the speed limits, particularly on the southern end of College Highway. You know, we have a couple of businesses down there. We have a new house that's going in down there. There's a bar, and you go from forty miles to fifty to forty, you know, it's 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 just crazy, you know. Also, it's talking about traffic signalization at Tannery Road. And then, of course, Randy got in the thing about the street sweeping, which hasn't been done for several years, although the Town of Southwick and other communities, because of the stormwater, are required to do it twice a year. But apparently, the state doesn't have to abide by the same rules. And then, of course, he's talking about missing signage and cracks. Though I understand the state has a several billion-dollar surplus, and I know they're probably very busy, but it'd be nice if if some of these things were taken care. So Randy, thank you for writing that letter. Hopefully, it'll get some traction. Okay, we need to approve a reserve transfer in amount of ten thousand dollars for legal advertisements and job postings. We're, we've already expended eleven thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and fifteen cents. And they got three thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents in cumber. So we only have a balance of twenty-three cents. And we still have several months to go. So need a motion?
Discussion real quick.
Sure.
Not opposed to motion. Just, we should probably ask the boards that are posting public notices to make sure that their fees are in line with what we're being charged.
Good point.
That's the whole point of those fees is to recover those costs.
Right.
I get a lot of these are from the town clerk, and they're statutory postings, and the town's going to have to bear those.
Right.
For hearings and for ConCon Board of Health, planning board, et cetera, they should make sure their fee structure is in line.
We tell you what, why don't we, since we're going to be going into the budget hearings in March, why don't we kind of send out an email and ask everybody if they couldn't please analyze that? I'm not talking about spending a year analyzing, just a quick.
To make sure. Because we did it a few years ago.
Right.
A couple of boards changed their fee structure according to what it was costing to rent stuff in the paper, size of ads, et cetera.
Right.
So I'll make that motion, though, for that.
Okay, I need a second.
I second the motion.
On the roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Do we have the original?
Make sure I get the right one.
Don't even start, Mr. Mogul. Don't even start.
We turned all them bulbs. I guess I missed that incident. What's this one, Mr. Chairman?
This one is to approve a reserve fund transfer in amount of ten thousand dollars for the street light account. The beautiful decorative lights that we install. I think we talked about the outlets were malfunctioning for several reasons. Because the, they weren't sealed in a method that they should have been sealed when when they originally were put up. Now the receptacles are much better. There are also problems with rodents, you know, chewing on wires. So to get our decorative street lighting working, we had to replace just about every single receptacle, and they were even out there today. You know, so.
Yeah, we appreciate the work by both Dick and Randy's department on this, and they worked with the police department for the safety issues along the roadway to make it safe for the vendors and others to affect these repairs and this work.
Right, and with these new. Right, and with these new covered outlets, it should keep moisture out. So we shouldn't have a continuing problem, but uh, uh, those lights, decorative lights, we talked about the, the black poles also are are property of the town of Southwick, so it's not an ever source problem, they're, they're, they're ours.
So you mean to say that a project designed by the lowest bidder and then built by the lowest bidder, we find out that the stuff doesn't actually work when we go to use?
Uh,
not to put you on the spot, Mr. Chairman, that's not my point. I will send those mice a strongly worded letter as well. And I'll make a motion for the ten thousand dollar.
All right, I need a second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye. Jason, aye.
And if you want to pass, tell me the original. And the decorative lights were red and white for Valentine's Day. They'll be switching over to green for Saint Patrick's Day. So, come to Southwick at nighttime. It's, it's festive. All right. Now, uh, we have on here approved the Select Board Town Report. This was just my initial draft. It's not finished yet. I'd ask, uh, people to hold off until it's, uh, finished. If you have any comments or suggestions, greatly appreciated. Will do. Okay? All right, next is we will approve a one day liquor license on April twenty first, twenty twenty three. This is for the Cultural Council Art Exhibit Reception. Uh, it's on a Friday from four P M. to eight P M. Where they have, uh, beer and wine. And as usual, uh, they have a nice just map and uh, the waving of the police officer.
This is a very well attended event. Um, very highly regarded from this area. I would gladly make the motion to approve a one day liquor license for the Southwood Cultural Council.
Need a second?
I will second that motion.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, aye.
Okay, we're going to new business. Uh, Mr. Steinhardt, new business?
Uh, let's see, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, uh, let's see, Jason and I met with the new state Senator, uh, Paul Marks District Director, John Gould on Monday, and we discussed, um, and introduced ourselves as Southwick officials to let him know about all the different matters, uh, that we're gonna be needing to have their support on. I mean, you know, between some of the Lake Management issues, some of the issues with roads, some of the projects we're dealing with, as well as the special act of the legislature that we're gonna approve probably in May, where we're gonna need to have their okay to, um, split the town clerk treasure collector positions, which were originally came into authorization by a special act in nineteen seventy one. So, um, and then the district director went up and met the council on aging folks. And then he had, uh, other people starting to drop by. So this was a good first start in getting to know the staff and him getting to know our staff and our department heads. And of course, I did send an email out to people. Um, you know, setting forth the senator's letter and all of the different officials that work for the senator and what capacities they're in and what their contact information is.
Excellent. Mr. Mogul and I had the opportunity to meet him, uh, a couple of months ago and, uh, and, uh, exchanged business cards, so. Uh, he says he is not going to forget, uh, the town of Southwick. I guess we're number three on a list of fifty plus communities.
And he was in town for another event as well, a couple of weeks ago, so.
And we did, we did remind him, Mr. Chairman, we are the third largest community in the district.
Right, right. All right, uh, any other new business, Mr. Steinhardt?
No, mine, rest of them are old.
Okay, uh, first thing I have is a, uh, Mr. Grinnell said, sent me an email as chairman of Lake Management. Uh, they had some, uh, needed to get in a grant application. I told them I'd bring it up at tonight's meeting. Gave them the green light because it's just a grant application to address, uh, some of the needs, uh, uh, at Congamon. Uh, so, and, uh, it, 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 he, he was very optimistic about, uh, uh, going forward with it, uh, from the people that he had talked to on the federal level, so. So.
Right, was that the EPA, uh, Russ, the, uh, applying for a program to do some, uh, bathymetric mapping?
Correct, correct, which would lead to, uh.
Right, he did, he did send that email to you and I, and I did forward it to the other members of the board.
Okay, good.
So, I'm not sure if they had a chance to check their emails, but they, they, they will have it when they open up their email from this afternoon and they'll be able to familiarize themselves with it.
Okay, so I, I think it's, it's, it's certainly a positive thing, you know? Uh, that this could lead to the possibility of, uh, doing some, uh, type of dredging in some of the, uh, different, uh, nooks and crannies of Congamon uh, to make, uh, access to the water easier, so. Uh, it's a positive thing, uh, along with all the other things that Lake Management and Mr. Grinnell's working on. Uh, concerning the dredging of Great Brook and, uh, uh, the, uh, south end also.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, he also made note in that memorandum that, uh, it might also allow them to withdrawal, withdraw what was a proposed forty five thousand dollar budget um, request from this year's budget and to lay that aside because these other funds would pers- be pursued through this federal agency.
Correct, and that's, that's certainly a positive thing. If we can get federal funds, uh, it's, it's not a burden on the taxpayers. And as we say all the time, Congamon is a great pond. It's the responsibility of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And it's not really right that the town of Southwick is, has to bear the burden, uh, so many times. Uh, the next thing, uh, well, I'll go on with, uh, talking about Congamon. I had the opportunity to, uh, do the, uh, show, uh, up in Westfield, uh, this morning with, uh, Dr. Muller. And the whole show was about Congamon. And like I always say to Eric, uh, Muller, uh, and, and to Dick also, I always learn something and, and doing a show for an hour with him was, was, was fun. Uh, I learned even more about Congamon, even though I grew up here in Southwick and I've been around the lakes, it's, uh, he, he's a wealth of knowledge. And certainly someone that fights very hard, uh, uh, for improving Congamon. So I encourage anyone that is interested in Congamon. Uh, because, uh, Dr. Muller is also a member of Lake Management. He went over the, the reasons for the permitting. He went over, uh, uh, the, the quality of water of the lakes. He went over the coal eye issue. So I mean, it's, it was very informative. So I encourage people to, uh, to, uh, what they can Google it.
It'll be on the YouTube, the town YouTube page, probably tomorrow, the day after.
Right, usually the day after. Right, so it's, it's, uh, wealth of knowledge. We're very lucky to have, uh, people like Dr. Muller and, and Dick Grinnell's, uh, uh, part of the Lake Management team. And the other thing I was gonna mention is I, I got invited to a ceremony up at the, uh, uh, regional, uh, school last Thursday, the ninth of February. It was, uh, they were naming the Guidance Department Suite after the late George LeBlanc, who was a, a guidance counselor and a longtime educator and also a member of the, uh, Regional School Committee. Uh, there was over a hundred people there. And, uh, former teachers, uh, former, uh, uh, superintendents, Jerry Fortier was there. Uh, I don't know if he was around superintendent, okay? And, uh, here's poor Jerry there. I had to walk up behind him and, and remind him. I said, what are you doing here? I thought you were still up on the roof when we had that lawsuit with G E. And Jerry went up and staged a protest up on the roof of the school. Uh, and we got national exposure over that and, uh, Jerry couldn't stop laughing. Uh, so it was good to see him, uh, former principals, um, Jay, Dr. Dr. Jay Berry was back, um, and, uh, it was, it was, it was a, a great, great, uh, dedication ceremony. And it well deserved. Uh, George LeBlanc was, uh, one in a million. He, he did a lot for the kids, uh, in the town of Southwick. I know he did a lot for my stepson when he was at the high school, helping him get through with, uh, uh, some issues and, uh, just, and also his dedication as a school committee and also when I appointed him years ago, uh, to the Board of Appeals, when he was on the Board of Appeals. And he also was part of the, I like to call the team that, uh, worked to, uh, get the town beat. Uh, when I applied for that grant, George was right there with me and, uh, Bobby Clark and Barry Lynch, you know, uh, so. Uh, it was just a great, great, great time to honor somebody like that. And with that, that's all I have on there. Well, business, Mr. Mogul.
I have a couple of things and just to, uh, the video for your radio show um, is waiting some people to view it at, uh, the W S K B Community Radio. It'll probably be on the Southwick Community Television page tomorrow. But it was on the, uh, W S K B Community Radio page this afternoon. So on YouTube, so if anybody wants to see it, have at it. And Dr. Muller and the entire Lake Management, they're just a huge asset to the town. Um, I never have to worry about ever, hardly ever being the smartest guy in a room, and it's never a problem with Dr. Muller's in the room. He is a smart, smart man. And, and it was, we're lucky to have him.
We're lucky.
And, and that group.
And, uh, I, I drove up with him and we talked about uh, his family's farming background, you know, and it's quite interesting. Quite interesting, and he, he's got a family he should be very proud of, uh, because they did some extraordinary things in the agricultural field.
Awesome. A couple of quick things and then, uh, I'll defer on how you want to handle this. Um, at the Mass Municipal, um, the Mass Municipal Association showed off their databank of all the information they have on every single uh, city and town in the Commonwealth, all three hundred and fifty one, with a picture of each town hall and, and what have you. Uh, there was a couple of critical errors on our page, so I've sent them a strongly worded letter. Been busy with that lately.
I also noted, Doug, I also notified them, Doug.
So they, they, uh, they have the Southwick jog as a, uh, jag.
Yes.
And, um, they have our town meeting at, at, uh, March, not May. So I, they are going to correct that in the next update to the, their databank, which is, uh, imminent. Uh, this evening I attended a pasta dinner to support the Southwood Police Department. Uh, thank you to the Legion for supporting the, the Southwood Police and all the events that they, that they support through the, uh, their Wednesday monthly spaghetti dinners. Um, my chief left. I was gonna give him a free plug for his game dinner this Saturday night, I believe, also at the Legion is the Fireman's Game Dinner. Uh,
Tickets are available.
Available and available at the door, I believe. Um, and then I have the marijuana survey results whenever you want me to show them off. Can I do it now?
Go ahead, go ahead. Drumroll?
Ah. I remember how to do this.
You spelled my name right, so that, there you go. Thank you.
Except, you know, I gotta. Hang on. I don't often use them, believe it or not, for work.
You have so much on the table?
Yeah, I think it'll work, okay. So I'm showing up over there.
Uh, your name showed up.
Good morning. Doug is about to share.
There it is. I can see it, Doug. Now I can see it, Doug.
Okay. Okay, so here's the, it'll catch up in a second. There we go. So we've tallied up the results. We split the results in half so everybody can see how they came in. But, um, the survey was a pretty unscientific, simple, one question survey. Should recreational cannabis retailers be permitted in the town of Southwick? Let's see if I can get rid of that. So some, wow, that's long. Survey, um, we offered the survey online. Um, that you could scan a Q R code from your census and, and or from the town's webpage. There was a link direct to the survey. And it was also mailed with the census. Uh, we closed the survey on last Friday at five o'clock. And the paper surveys were tallied in the town clerk's office by the town clerk, supervised by the town clerk. And she swept the mailbox at four forty five to make sure that none were dropped off in the mailbox between the time the mail came and four forty five. We didn't miss a one. Um, and as I mentioned, this was a totally unscientific call, looking to just get a, a, a pulse on this issue because it's come up. Um, again, it's been part, mentioned in part of the master plan. Um, and there's just been, you know, good discourse on it, so it figured it was a good idea to take a look at it. So here's the results. So I split it out by the mailed in ones and the online ones, just because we had two ways to submit the survey, but the net result is as you see it. And you'll see in the, in the data presentation, um, how it broke out, but there were, and I further broke out, broke, broke, broke out the surveys by ones that were sent in with comments or without comments. So a lot of them were just, people checked yes and mailed, mailed in their census or uh, submitted the webpage and some people left uh, one line comments or multi paragraph comments in there. Um, which I'm still compiling to put in from all of the, uh, census ones, the online ones we have, I can, I will, uh, send out to you guys. But there's your data. The total, if you add up the summary, forty five percent, forty five point one five percent voted yes or were in favor and fifty four point eight five percent were opposed. And so here's the pie chart of the overall. Interesting to me was, and this is a summary table of the online survey from when it closed, kind of hard to read here, but, um, you know, we got three hundred responses online. And, um, you could see how many people left their email or a comment or their phone number in the survey. And then here's the detailed results from the online versus mailing. So on the online survey, fifty eight percent were in, were in favor of having uh, recreational, uh, cannabis retailers in the town of Southwick. And then on the mail in side, fifty nine percent were opposed, so it's almost exactly upset. So just, it was a sedition data point for me, looking at how the surveys came in. You know, I don't know if you can, I, I, you can't infer anything from demographic or whatever from the online versus the paper ones. I, I don't know, but that's just how they came in. And then just for reference, this is the, the current bylaws and zoning that both came in in the town meeting in uh, two thousand eighteen. Uh, chapter one thirty, section one is the Select Board Bylaw, if you will, or Town Bylaw, um, that's a one liner, non-medical marijuana establishments are prohibited in town of Southwick. And then chapter one eighty five thirty two dot two is part of zoning. That also came in, I think it was the next article on the warrant in two thousand eighteen. Um, and that section i- is the one that guides us today, which is a prohibited use for non- uh, medicinal marijuana retailers defined under Mass General law are prohibited within the town of Southwick. So, um, if we were to revisit that, or, or there was a will to revisit it, I, I just wanted to bring up the fact that, you know, the chapter one thirty to change that, no matter what, we do have to go to town meeting. And chapter one thirty would be a majority vote at town meeting. Chapter one eighty five thirty two dot two would be a zone change. You'd need two thirds at a town meeting. And going back to the data, it doesn't tell us much as far as how, you can't infer how a town meeting will go, but here's the, 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 the overall vote is fifty four forty six. Neither, and I was watching the online survey the whole time and doing the math of the two thirds. It never even the one that was in favor, never re- reached that threshold. But I'm just presenting the data and that's where the data, you know, this, the informal survey came back and we can use that as guidance for.
Well, thank you, Doug. That's excellent. Any other new business that's Mogul?
That is all for me.
Mr. Puron, any new business?
I guess, uh,
I guess I'm going to throw this under new. It's in regards to what you guys were talking about at the beginning. Regards to all the. Uncomfortableness as a, I would like to look at it from last week. I know there was a lot of concerns over different, the way things were played out and different things, whatever. First of all, I want to say I defend Doug wholeheartedly. I don't think it was fair the way that was handled. And I don't believe people should have been involved in that. The other boards and the way they work things, if the chairman lets someone speak, they're allowed to speak. And that's the way the the whole. The Roberts Rules of Order, basically, which is what we're based loosely upon. Are and so in dealing with that. Couple of people brought it to my attention that Maya has a code of conduct policy for town elected and appointed officials. So to remedy that problem, so I just printed it up and I think we should look at it as something that we can implement. And then it's there, you know, we use Maya and. And if people have some complaints, they can actually point to something and say that's what they're complaining about. Right. As far as that goes, I don't know if I had anything else to add up here. The cannabis thing, that's all that's that's that actually would fall under old business. So. For new business, though, something I was looking into in light of. All the recent unfortunate fatalities and other incidents that we've had. I've been doing some research, obviously, everybody knows that I'm a police officer. And the mental health and mental well being of first responders is a huge thing right now. The town of, let's see if I can bring this up. Not as good with the computer as Mr. Morgan. It's, I think this is the town of Weston. They actually recently put on their two thousand and nineteen town meeting, a warrant article to. Put aside a little bit of funding away. To fund a program that allows the first responders. And anyone involved in a critical crisis like that to have. A fallback somewhere where they can go. I mean, we have a. Dave Sutton does a very good job with the One Call Away Foundation, and I'm actually working. With him, I want to do something similar with the first responders, CPR and I'm sorry, CBR, fire and police. And. That's what I'm looking into as far as new. I think that was it for me. On you, and I defer back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you can have that. Well, I'll give that to Robin so that she can make copies for everybody. All right, we can carry it under old Benson. All right. Old business, North Pond, we're having a meeting on the twenty-seventh. I'll represent the board. The sewer system M I A will be setting up a meeting, the Good Mayor of Westfield. Informal meeting. Marijuana dispensary, we you've covered that, our informal survey. The marijuana host agreement, Hudson facility, still nothing. Seventy-four College Highway.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, they were, they, I did hear from. One of the gentlemen we met with last Friday and they were supposed to be having. A meeting on this past Monday about where. Which way they were going to go. It was fifty fifty. So I did not hear back from him. On Monday, so I've placed another phone call to them. To find out what is their position about whether or not. They're going to pursue that location from. The gentleman that operated now, and if it turns out that's not the case, then we're going to have to bring those other gentlemen back into a meeting. And ask them what their intentions are for that location.
Okay. Opening, like I said, we postponed tonight's. Interviews to next, next week. Speed limits in the deer run area. I think the police department has taken steps so over there. Municipal electricity, we've. Are are looking at that. I know Carl, you reached out to Beth. Right?
Uh, yeah, I introduced Beth to Jason by word of, you know, with a common email. And I'm I'm not sure if Jason, did you get a chance to talk with her yet?
With Beth yet. I've been working on the the other ends of it and I'll bring that up when it comes back to me. So.
Okay, she she knows.
Basically, I've just been reached out to the three different companies that do the public aggregation. And getting more information from them and the Department of Energy Resources. And I'm gonna. I will be presenting it to hopefully go on the town meeting. So. It's again, to me, I've talked to several people. It's a no risk, all reward. Right now, the way it's set up. So. I guess that's one of the ones I want to throw out to the voters and see if we can benefit everybody. Yep.
All right, the Green West Road. Where where are we on that, Carl?
Of the, we did receive the guidance we needed back from Attorney Beglane. We do have the draft documents, so. We have secured the butter list from the assessor's office. And we are preparing all the mailings and we're going to be inserting a date. We're envisioning the first. Meeting in March to invite in the the petitioner. As well as the D P W and the town planner so that we can have all the parties in front of the board. And we probably will move that meeting to the auditorium.
Okay, good idea.
I think Mr. Fury is in the audience tonight as well.
Yes. All right, the flag policy. I know you're really busy on stuff. I started writing down some notes.
I actually have been pulling. Yeah, I've been pulling stuff already. That's another thing I was going to bring up. I've been working on a hybrid of. What some other communities have put in place.
Yeah, so, yeah, I had a few things I wrote down. I'll I'll share them with the board. You know, I don't know if that work, but you know, food for thought from that discussion we had at Mass Municipal. Okay, old business, Mr. Steinhardt.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the asbestos abatement has been completed at the old fire station. At the rear of fifteen Depot Street. The manifest records have been sent to the building inspector and the Board of Health. Through my office. And now we can start examining what the next step would be for a demolition quote. So I'm gonna. Ask Ty and Bond for an updated opinion of probable cost.
Anything else?
Uh, yes, the next item. Is the town clerk treasure collector will be meeting with the consultant Eric Kinsfer, who I believe we all talked to at the municipal conference. Trade show. And he's going to be working with her office on the reorganization plan. And as part of that. We're going to need to revise the assistant town clerk treasure collector job description, even in the interim. So. I've got some. Recommended minor. Edits by Labor Council, and I'm going to submit those for the next meeting so that we can. Go ahead and have that adopted because that job description is about twenty years old. And I I really want to update it now because. I want to send it over to Westfield State because there's a. A professor, a dean in one of the programs who's willing to do. Some outreach for us for. M P A or Public Administration students. So we really need to start. And I've talked to Nadine about this, the different ways we undertake recruitment and advertising and. And just letting people know what's out there for positions in the municipal sector.
Yeah, absolutely.
Which, you know, which was right along the line. In fact, I met this gentleman. In a seminar, you know, at the municipal conference at the Heinz Auditorium. So you will be seeing that document come forward to you at your next meeting. So that was what I had, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Morgan, old business. Nope. Mr. Pro, no business. I guess. The results of the survey are kind of a puzzle. So that's something I have proposed and I'm going to be looking forward to or looking to bring that forward to try and put it on town meeting.
All right. Anything else, Dave?
No, you brought up the flag policy, so that was it.
Okay. We've concluded our business. We are going to be going into executive second, not to reconvene. As a matter of fact, we have a very. Heavy schedule and executive session on several issues. So. Motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter C thirty A, Section twenty-one, two and three, and Chapter two fourteen, Section one B. Litigation matters and strategy for collective bargaining with police union coalition, fire, I A F F, D P W. Non-union staff and clerk union. U P S E U Executive Session Regarding Mass General Laws, Chapters C thirty A, Section twenty-one, two and three, Chapter two fourteen, Section one B. And exception two, move to go into executive session, get out collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel into not to reconvene in an open session. Move to go into executive session, conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and not to reconvene in an open session. Declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining position of a body and to not reconvene in an open session. Exception three, move to go into executive session to set strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And the chair moved to go into executive session, conduct strategy, sessions, preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel into not to reconvene in an open session. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy respecting litigation. That the chair declared an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body and not to reconvene in an open session. Regarding Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, a person shall have the right against unreasonable substantial substantial or serious interference. With their privacy. Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith were damaged. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Morgan.
Jason Proon, I.
Okay, good night, everybody. We're going to executive session. We will not be meeting next week. It is a state holiday, so it'll be the following Monday.
Good night.
Have a good night. See you, Pat.